So I will go call the meeting to a porter. And our first item is comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Are you here to comment? No? Just here to observe? Okay, great.
Thanks for being here.
All right. Next is our consent agenda. Oh, before we do that, I should tell you that Andrew is sick. But it is stuck in an airport in Philly. And I'm expecting him to be here. So the consent agenda consists of minutes warrants. I don't think we have any leaves or hurdles.
We do not, right.
So we'll take those two things off. I need to pass, how many pull the minutes? So that leaves the consent agenda as being just the warrants. So do I have motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of approval and warrants? Thank you, Brendan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing. Okay, let's look at the minutes for just a second. I think there are two things on the minutes. Under the executive session, the vote to go into executive session is not recorded. So we need to add that the vote was, would have been eight zero, I believe. The other thing, Patrick, if you have the minutes pulled up, you can talk about this. I think about the way that piece of the bus, the electric bus came out wasn't exactly as I understood it. So Patrick, maybe you can talk about what it shows.
Yeah, just to clarify, right now it reads Essex Public Transit will be getting electric buses after a select board resolution, which is not true. It's, the electric bus will be given to Mountain Transit to operate within the district. And it operating within the district is a requirement for that to come to us. So it can't be moved out or used elsewhere in the state. So it's not public transit. It's for use within the school's transportation systems.
Okay, okay. Anything else on the minutes? Yes?
I did want to mention Kim arrived at 6:36.
Thank you.
Natasha too, okay. So I'll entertain the motion now. We approve the minutes as amended.
Does it move?
Thank you, Patrick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing. All right. Well, Erin McLeire is here tonight. She is designated Director of Equity Diversity and Inclusion with an update for us on how we can work. She's beginning in the district, so welcome, Erin.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. It's good to see everyone. My agenda this evening that I put together is designed to help walk you all through some of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of months. And I welcome questions. I have a point at which at the end of the presentation, you can provide some feedback and ask questions. The presentation is designed to ensure that you have a little bit of an understanding around what we mean as we talk about equity literacy and connect it to our continuous improvement planning concepts of equity and relate those two. I will share some draft frameworks for addressing equity literacy and also talk a little bit about leadership and some of the systems work that we've been doing. I'll spend a little bit of time talking about data and changing our lens and the way that we see and think about the data across EWSD. I'm going to provide you a sample school-based plan around some of the school-specific work that's being done. I'll also walk you through a series of pieces of evidence of work to date. And then, as I said, welcome feedback and questions, but you can feel free to jump in if you want to throughout the presentation. The concept of equity as it relates to our continuous improvement plan and the work that we did through our book read of building equity and the deep dive that you all took as a board into that concept focused primarily around structures by which we can create equitable opportunities in our schools. And in doing that work, one of the conversations that we have had is also about the dispositions that we need to have as educators as we walk into that work because it is not just a to-do list. Developing an understanding of equity is much deeper than talking about one policy or one practice. And our goal is to really think about how can we be very literate as educators across our system with an equity lens. When we talk about an equity lens, we are talking about making sure that we consider the experiences of all people, but particularly people who are experiencing oppression or feeling marginalized or lack of access to different parts of systems or experiences, both in our society and in our schools. So as we think about issues of racism, as we think about issues of classism, as we think about issues of ableism, when we think about heterosexism and the experiences that people have in our society, in our schools, and in our institutions, that is part of the work that we are looking to discuss now, today, as we begin to move forward. Is there a, I'm hearing something? Oh, sorry?
Liz asked me to listen in.
Oh, okay. Hey, Liz.
I'm not sure if she's now muted.
All right.
She's in the airports.
No, that's fine. I'm glad she's here. By phone is great. I'm excited to have her at the table.
I'm muting on my end. I'm like, that's not it. That's it. Do you please be quiet?
No problem.
I apologize.
No problem.
I just hope to be able to listen in.
All right. So I think it makes sense with that entry to talk both about, to move into what is equity literacy and talk a little bit about the role of implicit bias and bias generally inside of our, the way of being of systems, of people, of society, and of schools. Paul Gorski is an expert in the area of equity literacy. And I'm going to pass out a copy of a framework that we're beginning to use to think clearly about what our goals are for purposes of equity literacy. First and foremost, one of the abilities we are looking to build in ourselves as educators and as an institution of education is the ability to recognize even the subtlest bias and inequities. Inequity is not always completely clear immediately, particularly to those people who are part of a dominant culture and are not negatively impacted by inequity. And so our work is to better understand that. To build the ability to respond to bias and inequities in the immediate term, what skills do educators need to be able to do that? The ability to redress bias and inequities in the long term, and also to create and sustain a bias-free and equitable classroom, schools, and institutional cultures. So that is a very large body of work that is deeply rooted in hundreds of years of history and something that we believe strongly is important to discuss and work toward in order to be inside of a culture and an environment in our schools where the kind of ways of being we've described from our studies of equity through the Building Equity text are possible. So it's just important to note that these are dispositions and skills in all of us, in you all as leaders in this community, in administration and leaders in the school district, in our teachers, in our students, in our support staff. And so as you consume these concepts, it's just important for you to know that this really is a cross-cutting conversation. There are two videos that I desperately want to show you here tonight. However, they would total out at about two and a half hours, which we don't have. And so instead of showing you the two and a half hours worth of video that I really promise if you take the time to review, you will be happy you did so. The first one is Dr. Ruha Benjamin, who is an Associate Professor of African-American Studies at Princeton, came to the Vermont Principals Association Leadership Institute this year and presented on issues of courageous leadership and having honest conversations and asking difficult questions. And this video will really walk you through the work that she did with a large group of leaders in Vermont to think carefully about these issues. The second video is called "I Am From Here." It is a production that was created by the Vermont NEA. They have a large toolkit that they have put together around racial justice in our schools. And this is a video of students from Vermont speaking about their experiences and educators from Vermont speaking about their experiences, specifically as people of color in this environment, working toward being more aware and helping educate others about the issues that they experience. It's an incredibly powerful video that also, I think, is worth a watch. So maybe we can talk about how that might happen. We don't have time tonight, but they are two very, very worthwhile videos that should be watched and also then debriefed with people who have expertise to help unpack some of the concepts that are contained within them. I share them with you as well because they are resources that we are using in our leadership work around this topic.
Erin, could you send this specifically?
I will send both links to the board, well, through, what, Beth, maybe? To the board, so that you can have access to the link. You can just click and watch. I do think that if there's going to be some consistent watching of the videos, debriefing them and having an opportunity to talk about them is really worth discussing. And we can talk about that as well. And I'm happy to share both links. Patrick, were you just going to ask me something?
Yeah. Are they in your presentation slide that's on the Google Drive?
Well, the, so I think the one that was sent to the board was PDF as opposed to the live Google slide deck, but we can fix that.
Yeah.
And we can get it to you so that we make sure you have access to those links. Okay. I wanted to just pose two comments that struck me from Dr. Benjamin's presentation. And I will read these quotes. "What seeds do we plant and what water do we have to pour to make our schools fertile ground where students have the courage to stand up for what is right and for us to model it as educators?" And also, "How do we know we are making a difference?", which is something I know this board asks regularly. "We look for whether people are able to be vulnerable, ask authentic questions, take risks, and experiment with new thoughts and actions that are more just." And so that will give you a flavor for some of the messages that Dr. Benjamin promotes within the construct of her conversation. And again, is really worth a watch. I wanted to cite, before I dive into the work, a couple of examples of inequities that show up. I want to do this in a way that doesn't cause us to be overreactive about it and feel like we need to fix it immediately, but simply to share some patterns that exist from historic experiences, from being part of a state where the dominant culture is certainly highly present and has a lot of influence around our systems and the way we do our work. So I would offer you a couple of thoughts as you think about how you might see these issues of inequities show up inside of our community. First, I'd ask about housing patterns as they relate to socioeconomic status in Vermont communities. If you think about your own personal experiences, where you live and what that means and who lives around you and where other people live in our community, in our larger Chittenden County community, it will show up for you pretty quickly. Another example, and this is sort of close to home, and I hope it's okay to do this, our own voluntary transfer policy doesn't allow transportation as part of it. And so where students have access to what we might describe as choice or access to choice across our schools, so too must that come with the resource to be able to bring your children to and from school. That's a good example of how a policy can pretty quickly become an inequitable space. And I want to just note that a lot of this is unintentional in the front of the minds of people who are trying to do right. However, the impact is actually what matters in this work as we think about it. And so it's just important that it shows up for us sometimes. Our hiring practices, for example, in our Vermont licensure process, if we want to hire someone from out of state and they don't have a Vermont license, we need to procure a provisional license for them. To date, it's been our experience that you have to check a box that says you have said there is nobody with a Vermont license that can take this job who's qualified in order to request a provisional under that reason. I'll share about the work we're doing around that shortly, but you can see how that might create some barriers to diversifying our workforce and bringing people to Vermont from outside of Vermont as opposed to just staying sort of nested in our state. Dylan was here last week, not last week, two weeks ago, talking with you about social emotional learning and the importance of that work. I wanted to give an example of how really good work can also sometimes create inequity. So for example, where there is an issue from a social inequity taking place or microaggressions, and I can explain that as well, for a student repeatedly over time, and if a student gets really upset, and then SEL work says, why don't you take some breaths? Why don't you use mindfulness? And you can see how an injustice responded to with SEL strategy may not actually be an equitable way to approach an issue like that. It's a good example of how we need to be literate. We need our educators to be literate around these issues so that where that comes forward, we know how to address that in ways that doesn't ingrain inequity and make it worse. Another example is how we disaggregate data. And I'm going to talk with you a little bit about that in a few minutes. How we have historically disaggregated data in our state and what subgroups have we and haven't we looked at? And how do we pay attention to which subgroups subsets of data? So those are just some examples of patterns. I could list more. I don't share these with you to make you feel badly, but I think it's important that we surface the patterns that I'm talking about as we begin to walk down the road of this conversation. Martha, did you want to ask me something?
Could you go back to the SEL example? And more specifically explain?
More specific, sure. So for example, students have sat on panels here at Essex High School and talked about the repeated experience as a student of color of what you might describe as a microaggression, something that someone doesn't intend to make you feel sidelined or slighted. It wasn't their intent, but it does that. And that happens, students will report and people will report that that can happen fairly regularly. And when that takes place over time, it becomes really challenging to manage sometimes. And if you are in a situation as a person of color where that's happened to you repeatedly and finally that last one happens and you're, you feel very upset about that, and then someone sees that experience and applies a concept of, oh, that student is having a hard time regulating themselves, we should apply social emotional learning strategies, you need to learn how to be mindful and not be so upset? That's an example of where a strategy that can be very helpful in many situations and very, very necessary can be misapplied in circumstance that can create increased patterns of inequity and challenges in the experience. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I'm going to move into some ideas that we're having about frameworks for bringing equity literacy into our work more in an intentional way. We are thinking about the work of parents and community. You're going to hear me talk around each of these as I describe the activities to date. We're thinking about faculty and staff. We're thinking about leadership. And in the center, we're thinking about students. We're thinking about building equity literacy for everyone and how we can do that. And we're also thinking about counteracting some of the patterns that I described earlier that contribute to some of the inequities. We're also thinking about it from a couple of different lenses. So you know, there's the policy and political lens. We have a symbolic lens of what we see every day as we walk around, thinking about our human resources lens. You just talked, I just talked a little bit about that, as well as curriculum and instruction and how all of these topics around social justice, equity, and diversity show up in these spaces and the work that we have to do. We do not have a comprehensive plan yet. Under all of this, we really just sort of began this work, but these are some draft ideas that have been put forward about how to think about this work and how we might move forward. I'd like to first walk you now into some of the activities that are happening with leadership around these topics that I've been describing. First is that we are in the process of developing an equity leadership team for the Essex Westford School District. We're looking for students, teachers, leaders being invited to participate. And the team's role will be to develop a formal EWSD Equity Literacy Action Plan and ensure alignment with each individual school's actions and activities to build skills in this area across our system. So that's one leadership activity. I also wanted to note, and this is reflected in the section where it talks about parents and community, I am co-leading with the CJC, co-facilitating with the CJC, an Essex Westford Equity Organizing Committee. We are in the process of building a large number of people who will be invested in that work. It comes from the, it takes a village work that was done by VFE. That's where it started, that Saturday where lots of people came together and had conversations about equity and diversity. And we are in the process of working to develop four community-wide learning opportunities for community members and parents to learn more about this topic. We're talking about some movie screenings. We're talking about some speakers, maybe, to build awareness in our whole community as opposed to just centered on our school. These are some activities that the Essex Westford Leadership Team has undertaken. So individuals from our team are participating in an equity leadership team and the organizing committee that I just described. We're in the process of scheduling two full days of Beyond Diversity Training, and that will be able to have up to 80 participants across our system. That training is really designed to dive deep into some of the topics that I just described. We are using, oh, we are also, there are several of us who will be doing six, five additional days of training and courageous conversations that really trains leaders in how to lead this work well in schools, as well as other organizations, actually. We are using case studies on diversity and social justice education by Paul Gorski and C. Muphini, which is a text that is a series of case studies that allow you to read through, it's just about a two-page case study, an example of a time where inequity has shown up either in a classroom or in a policy or somewhere within a school system and lets us practice and build our muscles to understand this body of work. We are diving into data differently, and I'll share that with you in just a moment. There's been leadership in school-based plans and activities, so all of the principals are engaged in different levels of work around this topic. And then I actually will be participating in the VPA Equity Practitioners Network, which there were 30 of us that were accepted into Vermont cohorts, the first Vermont cohort. And Paul Gorski will be supporting this and will provide me coaching to be able to help with this work. It is new for me. I'm presenting to you about this for the first time. You all have seen me many times about support services. And so making sure that as we go forward, I have some support in that as well as something that we wanted to make sure was the case. I have a description of that here that I can hand out as well. Deb Anderson, our Director of Human Resources, and I have been meeting, and we are looking to do a full review of hiring practices through the EWSD Equity Leadership Team once that is seated. We also, I talked a little bit about that issue of the licensing piece that we felt was sort of blocking us from being able to really go out into the world and bring people in from other places into our school district as teachers. And we have a meeting with the folks who are in charge of licensing at the agency this week to have a deeper conversation about our perspectives, about why that's a challenge. The principals are working on a new supervision and evaluation focus area that is aligned with this particular body of work. And we also went ahead and made a change to our posting in all job postings now that go out. And it's there on the screen. EWSD is committed to building a culturally diverse and inclusive environment. Successful candidates must be committed to working effectively with diverse community populations and expected to strengthen such capacity if hired. If you are committed to safety of all students but do not meet the qualification listed above, you are still encouraged to apply. So one of the things we tend to do in our postings is we like list everything we would want in a candidate. And I think sometimes that makes people not apply. They may not see themselves that way. And that's often true for people who may not have tons of confidence about their skills, but we want people to apply. And so we're really trying to change the conversation there. So we're focusing in on that human resources piece. Okay. I'll stop for questions here and then move into the data. Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a quick question about the human resources piece. Have we thought at all about which jobs within our district, since we do have such a large proportion of the jobs in the area, might be suited to hiring and employing like immigrant and refugee family members?
Yeah. We, that's a great concept that I think belongs in our full overview of like, what are we doing? How is this working? How are we encouraging diverse populations to apply? We are, we have also bumped up against some of the federal requirements in reference to some of the US citizenship expectation in the employment law. And so that's something else we're sort of unearthing and trying to figure out, like, is there a way? How do we do this so that we reduce the barriers for refugee and immigrant populations and just really people who might not fit some kind of exact sort of descriptor in a job description? But how do we think differently about our interview process? How do we think differently about our screening process so that people who we might not always sort of screen in through traditional paper screening? Maybe that's not the best way to go about this. So that's a great idea, and I think that belongs inside of that thorough overview. We wanted to make, we've taken lots of small steps, and I'm going to show you several of them. And some of them I've showed you already in reference to the leadership work. And I also just want to note, while I'm super excited about that and I can't sit still on this for lots of different reasons, we also need to build this team, give them opportunity to consider all of our data, think about all of these topics, bring student voice to the table, and figure out what are those priority directions? Because right now, the work we're doing is sort of taking opportunity, finding, like this ad right here, we said, what could we do right now that wouldn't disrupt practice but would move us forward? And so we chose to do this. There are some things that we didn't choose to do because There are some things that we didn't choose to do because we have more work to do to get there and also want to figure out priorities. Kim?
I was, as I read that, the last sentence, someone committed to safety but don't meet the qualifications listed above, is that the qualifications listed in the two sentences above?
No. This is, this is a, so have you also, here's something, here's something else we've done. Have you noticed that we've been posting jobs on Facebook? Has anybody seen that in their Facebook feed? So we have started, and it's allowed me to like share it myself, right, personally with large friend lists and all over the country. So the, we've started posting positions on Facebook. I bring that up because if you go to Facebook and you see those postings, what you'll notice is that there are seven or eight bullets of qualification above that paragraph. And so it's referring to a large number of qualifications above.
Is my understanding?
Yeah. Sure.
Has the leadership team thought about doing some case studies of things that have happened within this district to address these?
These issues.
For example, like I bring up, good friends of ours have a daughter who's entering Fleming, and she has physical disabilities, and the new playground isn't accessible to her.
Yep.
So it seems like, maybe we should do some case studies and say, okay.
Yeah.
Are there things we failed to recognize?
Yes. I actually thought about adding that to the list of patterns because that's another great example of a pattern of inequity where when we, when we build something, a playground, are we placing an equity lens on top of the design decisions that we are, as we do that, right? And is there a way to ensure that that always happens as opposed to the special ed director being involved in per se the building of all of the playgrounds that might happen, as an example? And instead of having to kind of go back and fix an issue that showed up, how do we make sure that our lens is present on the front end so that those kinds of inequities don't take place? There are many of them. Several of them that I listed, those are here.
Right. Well, that's why I think, I think.
Those aren't elsewhere.
Into yourself and be like, okay, this is where maybe we could have done better, and how could we improve it?
Totally.
Is the most beneficial.
Of course.
And what these case studies are actually doing is we do have similar case things that have happened in this district. So as we read and talk about something else, it's easier to do that than to look at yourself. But then they end up turning the mirror back and saying, oh, we just went through a similar thing. How could we have done that? So that's prompting some amazing conversations.
The example that Beth is talking about is one of the first ones we read is about a PTO that is looking at reward-oriented fundraising. So if you sell a certain amount, you get to go up and up and up. And in the meeting, someone said, you know, I don't have a lot of family members who can afford to buy 700 candy bars. And so my child doesn't get the rewards, and it feels really inequitable. And that then response that comes right afterwards, which is, my child worked really hard and went door to door, and I think my child should have access to rewards. So that's an example of a case study that's in here. It doesn't provide any answers. This is not an answer book to these issues. It prompts the conversation, and as Beth said, it sort of raises up, do we have fundraisers in our system that are structured such that kids get rewarded for selling more? We all know the answer to that, right? Because many of us are parents in the system and have seen those come home. And so what does that mean? How do we think about that? Should we be thinking about that differently? And one of the things Ruha, Dr. Benjamin said is that, once you build the muscles to see these issues, you will see them all the time. And so the question becomes, where do you change first? Where are your priorities? Which, you know, what is the work of the board? What is the work of the leadership team? What is the work of teachers? What is the work of our support staff? What's the work of the folks who are serving our child nutrition and child nutrition services? Everyone has a role here, and so that team is really important to get to those spaces where we're really clear about where we're stepping first, what is the work, and who's doing it. So absolutely plenty of opportunities to self-reflect for all of us, and that's what, definitely this is, this is about for sure. I'd like to share with you some data in a different lens. Can you all see that? This is 2017, 18 ESBC data. It is divided by students of color and their proficiency rates, one, two, three, and four, four being the highest, one being the lowest, proficiency being a three or a four, ELA meaning English Language Arts, and math. You can see next is students who are white, who are not identified as needing free and reduced lunch, and do not find themselves eligible for special education based on disability, and their proficiency rates. You can then see low socioeconomic status, so students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch and their proficiency rates. And then you can see the rates of students, the proficiency rates for students who are eligible for special education. Students are double counted in these numbers. If students fall into one or the other, they're double counted. The number of students behind the data is not here for a reason because you can't compare unless you're just looking at percentages. And so suffice to say, the numbers are plenty big in all of these populations to be able to compare. Yeah.
Do these numbers include English language learners?
It includes all students. That's another, that's actually a question that came up, is whether that should be a category as well in the list. We are working on changing our lens. How do we look at our data so that we find ourselves understanding performance of our schools in reference to how they're supporting students in their learning? And this is just one example of how you can change your lens. This isn't the end-all, be-all lens. It doesn't mean that you couldn't sort of say, well, if you did it this way, then you might see this. Absolutely. And all of those suggestions are welcome. It's just a way to project forward a little bit about how we might shift our lens and is connected to the conversation you all were having about data in June, if you remember, and is a shift, I think, that was talked about here. Kim?
If a student is an English language learner, are they an IEP? Are they a special ed student?
No.
So they may or may not be in any identified category?
Any other category.
So their own category would be an interesting or beneficial.
It might be an interesting, it might be an interesting one to add. Yes, for sure.
Okay. Thanks. I just didn't.
These are all self-reported except the last one. This is all self-reported data in the ESBC?
This, no. So the special education is not self-reported, and I mean, I guess if you consider free and reduced lunch self-reported by applying, then yes. Yes.
About a third of our population is direct certified, but there is still a large percentage that needs to apply.
Yep. Yep. And I, and again, this conversation is more to evidence a shift in the way we think as opposed to diving into these specific numbers other than to highlight the very significant difference that you see given the disaggregation in a different way. The numbers speak for themselves in that way. We will be doing more of this work as we continue down the road of thinking differently about our data with inequity lens. I'd like to now just share with you that all of our schools have agreed to complete implicit bias training for faculty and staff. We are working at this point with individual schools based on where they've been and where they need to go. Not every school is in the same place around this body of work. Some have done more than others. And we find ourselves often in that place in school districts when we start some work kind of, I wouldn't say for the first time, but in a concerted effort in a centralized way where we're all working to move together, often you find different entry points. So we are working on doing that. I did want to share the work that Essex High School is doing. It is probably the furthest along in a formal plan around this body of work. So I'm going to share Essex High School's plan with you. That's a little hard to see. So we are thinking about this from the perspective of teachers and staff, student voice and support, the collective EHS community, and need for dialogue, and data. And so we have some work that's happening right now and going forward into this school year to improve the equity literacy around teachers and staff across Essex High School. It's our goal to have adults in a place where they're comfortable, capable, and competent with equity literacy, to be working on these topics with students in ways that is helpful so that they're not, if a student would like to talk with them about an issue, they're not suddenly unsure of themselves and able to engage in this body of work with confidence. CQ Strategies is a local entity that supports building cultural quotients for educators, and they will be training a group of Essex High School leaders and teachers in a train-the-trainer model so that then the trainers can come in with this new expertise. And that, that training is on November 5th, December 10th, and January 21st, and then working on Tuesday afternoons during early release between February and May to build that into a larger cohort of people and complete training. Student voice is a really important part of this work. This is in service to students as well as our own adult culture, and figuring out how to make sure that's present is really important. I am scheduled to go to meet with student government on the topic of social justice and equity actually next week to begin to talk with student government about ways that they see the future around student voice in this work. One of the things I know to be true, given some of my conversations with student leaders, is that they are desiring a way to find voice for many other students other than students in student government, that that's something that they're feeling really is essential and want to figure out a way forward. There's also a project that we are implementing this year. We are partnering with Spectrum's Multicultural Youth Program to staff a multicultural help desk at Essex High School with a large number of staff members from Spectrum who do a lot of work with refugee and immigrant populations, as well as students of color and allies and all students, and really adults too, who need support in areas of understanding and being supported around issues of racial equity, of issues around cultural challenge, and for example, being expected to assimilate into a dominant culture as opposed to keep the value of your own culture. So they, we are in the process of bringing them on board. They're very excited about the work. We are very excited about the work. Student government is very excited about the work, and I expect to probably be back here sharing more with you about that. And then we also talked as a VFE group about the idea of building a very regular feedback loop to leaders from students about our work. And so those are some ways that we are working to move forward around student voice and support. We are also in the process of talking with some possible facilitators about a community dialogue for Essex High School specifically around the issues of social justice and racial equity. We had some events at the end of last year. We have had events in our high school that have shown up in reference to things that, you know, we need to self-reflect on, how do we, how do we come forward in ways that create a more just and equitable experience for all students, especially students who are experiencing experiences of marginalization? And so we are talking about what that could look like. That's not framed up fully yet to describe, oh, it's going to be on this data, and this is what it'll look like. But we are looking at outside facilitators to support us in that. And then we also in October have a meeting with a group to design a data set for review with a new lens using equity literacy approaches for Essex High School. We plan then to meet with the Racial Alliance Committee and administrative team to review findings and plan differently around how we will use data at Essex High School. So that's an example of a school-based plan that sort of touches all of the different areas that you see framed up on the, some of the frameworks that I shared with you that are then relating back to a school-based plan. Another example of something we're doing is we actually just distributed pronoun lanyards so that people can wear lanyards to evidence their preferred pronoun in order to support students or others who want to offer their pronoun in reference to students who are experiencing challenges with gender identity or fluidity. And sometimes that changes depending on where they might find themselves at any given time. And so instead of, for example, some of you may have been part of a meeting where you're asked to introduce yourself and share your preferred pronouns, this is an opportunity to be able to share pronouns without necessarily asking someone else to do so, to offer the opportunity to others who may choose to do so. So there are lots of things like that that are happening around the school district in reference to this work. That's not on the Essex High School plan. That's something we did for all of our schools, all 10 schools in, in the school district, and again, not yet tied to a specific overarching plan because we need that committee to come together to do that body of work. How am I doing on time? Okay. Okay.
You're fine.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just want to endorse the idea of reaching out to other student groups to sort of spread this, the spirit of this work. I've been at a couple of different colleges where working specifically with athletes on campus has been a great way to get people who you maybe wouldn't expect to be enthusiastic about this kind of work involved early. So I definitely think that would be a great approach to get other students, other student groups involved.
Great. Thanks for that suggestion. Any other questions before I move into some other evidence? I'm going to hand around a couple of pieces of paper. The first I want to share with you, the World of Difference Institute Staff PD Overview that happened at ADL on August 26th that's specific to the implicit bias work that is happening. It's just an example and something that is planned for also EMS. I wanted to share with you that last year, EES used CQ Strategies to do some implicit bias training. I'm handing out the Founder's Family Letter that made me so happy as a mom to receive and see the importance of equity and diversity work within the parent message that was going home. This is the CQ Strategies training that the Racial Alliance Committee will attend at Essex High School, and this is the detail behind VPA's Equity Practitioners Network, which I will be a part of and will be expecting me as part of this cohort to be doing work in these areas in our school district. So being part of this cohort loops in our work collectively in this direction. I've had conversations with Summit and Hiawatha, Founders, Fleming, working to benchmark dates for this important work. Westford as well had me come up during in-service, and the faculty watched, I am from here, and did some processing and journaling around that video. So those are all examples of evidence that are happening now in schools, and we will be building out the plan going forward. Patrick?
Not to put you on the spot, but I want to put you on the spot.
Sure.
What does work to benchmark date mean? Do you mean that you've got a plan in place for these schools to go through that? Because what I don't, or at least what I would be dissatisfied to see if I had a kid go into one of these schools realizing it's not going to get done this year, but half the district has already?
No. So this, for this year, we have agreed that all of our schools will experience implicit bias training this year. I just, I have had meetings since I put this presentation together. For example, Summit Street School now has dates benchmarked for when that will happen. This is just keeping in mind that this position technically started July 1, working on really bringing a lot of this work forward in a much more formal way than we ever have before, including working with principals. including working with principals to make sure that we are not, and I'll show you this slide in a minute too, there's, you know, there's a top-down approach that's not overly effective with this kind of work, just to be honest with you. I mean, this work is about people in here. It's not about go use this book, go teach this, right? It is about our own reflective practice. And so while there is leadership that's needed and we need to benchmark dates, so we, no, that those trainings have happened and we're building those skills. There's also a body of work to bring schools forward in ways that match for them. Does that help? It means that I'm in the process of setting dates.
Right.
I could have probably just used that language.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, like, some, you know, sometimes when you like sit in meetings, right, when there's like, you know, you have explicit dates for some schools up there, which you clearly do, and then the other ones are kind of, we've benchmarked some dates out. That can be September, but it can also be September of next year.
It also appears that the 6th after the 2 got deleted. So it was August 26th, not August 2nd, but that happened. So that's, that's not an accurate date. Sorry about that typo. Yeah?
I am thinking of it maybe Martha, Beth, Erin, all of us think about it, intentional implicit bias training for our board. I'm thinking about whether that's something that can either happen in the course of a regular meeting. Is there an online resource that would be a primer that then we could follow up with a conversation? Just, I think work that should also be exploring this intentionally just as we did the Building Equity book last year.
I, thank you for that opening. I absolutely concur, and Beth and I have talked a little bit about it as well. And I am happy to be a resource of helping find how that would work best and then, and then doing some planning. The case study book is another resource that could be used. The videos that I just shared with you. There's, there's implicit bias modules that have been put out by the Kerwin Institute out of Ohio State that is one of the, it's probably the lead research entity around implicit bias work around the country. They produce annually a full resource set around implicit bias, and they, they have videos and assessments and work that you can do. Then there's, yes, CQ Strategies is another great resource. The Bay Paul Foundation is a great resource. The work with the Multicultural Youth Program with Damian Williams is also, he's an amazing resource that could be supportive in a design like that. I think that's a good idea. Also throughout there that I think we have some work to do around policy around this topic. But I think that building our own muscles and understanding of this work before we try to dive in and talk too broadly about policy might be a good idea. Some of you may feel really proficient in this work, but none of us are done likely, right? This is forever work on ourselves and in our world to make it a better place. So I, I absolutely think that's a great idea.
Like model policies around equity had been a body of work that got started with the SBA and, and the SA and VPA, I think, a year and a half ago. And then there were a little bit of breaks put on it to try and have there be a cohesive approach to it versus the state looking at it through one lens at the agency and the organizations looking at it differently, and Visbit wanting to make sure that it was going to align with a positive approach to the work versus a Gachiu approach to the work, maybe. And I don't want to characterize that wrong. But I, I, I will follow up on that just from the organizations to see where that may stand. It had been put on hold.
Yeah, and I, I'll just reference that, right, that learning piece that's so essential for institutions and individuals to go through to be ready to do that kind of work. Like, I don't come to you today without going through a long process myself to get to where I am now, and I'm not done. You know, I am cisgendered, I am white, I grew up in privilege, I grew up in Vermont. And so I come with many of the descriptors that would indicate a level of benefit from many of the institutional isms of all kinds. And so your ability to even recognize that as who you are, being able to move forward in that work is a critical part of the conversation. And I think it's hard to do that work without that learning first and that deep dive about where you find yourself in, in this work and what you contribute to it. So I, I definitely would be happy to help support the conversation for sure. Yeah?
Is there model policy work happening?
Yeah.
That is always a place to start.
Yeah, sure.
Not necessarily.
There's some great work happening out in Oregon that Beth actually brought back from some work she was doing that I think would be a wonderful example as a place to start. So yeah, I'm happy to be of whatever support is needed around these topics. So in closing, I just, I want to remind everyone that every step forward on this work is a good step. That planning across EWSD is in process, but we chose to activate groups where readiness appeared and passion is growing and not wait for some kind of broad plan with lots of action steps to step forward. But we need to do that work. And that engagement and interest in social justice and equity literacy across EWSD is ever-present, becoming a regular discussion formally and informally. And this is not really top-down, and it's not only bottom-up. It's, it's much more holistic than that. And we're working hard to make it a very regular part of our conversations. So with that, hopefully I didn't take up too much time and happy to answer other questions that you might have.
Just had a couple of comments. The first one, in the master's work that I had done, we'd used the Harvard Business Case Studies as well. And they, I found them to be very effective in reinforcing the materials. But what the professor did was he broke the group up, the class up into different groups, and then periodically rotated and created new groups. So there was a process where each group had to come up with a solution. Outcome of this is a recommendation as to what you would do to address a specific situation as the group comes to consensus. And then the enlightening piece was, well, this is what really happened. And what, what did they not follow in terms of business practices or HR or whatever? It was a real eye-opening learning experience, so very powerful, you know, and I think the learning process is, is really a challenge here. But once people get into it, you'll have fun with it. The second comment had to do with recognition that change doesn't come easily and that there's going to be resistance to whatever is proposed at different groups and levels. So I guess what I'm looking for is some thought regarding how the board, how I as a board member will be able to view progress and acceptance and/or degrees of resistance in terms of, to achieving these goals.
I think that, that what I know to be true is that where we begin these conversations, there does tend to be some resistance sometimes and some feeling of challenge in reference to some of the positions that I've described tonight. I think we saw some of that when the Black Lives Matter flag issue came before the board. And I am also thinking about the work that many of you did when we moved forward with a statement about support around access to bathrooms regardless of gender identity. And I have been incredibly proud of this board in reference to these issues. And I think that the learning that Kim described and asked about, and we've talked a little bit about, will just bring that forward more so to ensure that we hold a responsibility for all of our students to experience an environment that respects who they are, does not marginalize them based on identity, and brings forward a non-bias environment. And so while that's not a specific answer to a specific issue, it might look different depending on what the issue is. But I, I do have faith in all of your skills in reference to this topic and being able to be articulate and thoughtful and careful about our community and about our students.
Thank you.
So Erin, in light of what we've just talked about, I'm skipping this letter to parents. And what came to my mind was it starts right out talking about accessing websites. What about folks who don't have a computer?
Yeah, I think, I actually was just in a conversation earlier today about the experience of single parents too, that that resonates for me similarly where, you know, how, how and when we offer what we offer matters and our ability to have a lens that supports families regardless of their circumstances in ways that meet their needs. The ability to always anticipate that can be hard. But I think we could be better about listening more deeply. So I don't know that we have spaces or ways of engaging people that is true, where they truly feel safe. I think about all the times we talk about when we have events at a school and try to get community engagement, and who comes and who doesn't, right? And how do we do this work differently so that everyone feels an equal space at the table to say, that's not meeting my needs, this is my need, without feeling worried about sharing that and knowing that we will be supportive? So I think that there are many examples of circumstances where we might assume that everybody has internet access, assume that a, a parent can get their child to school at a certain time to have a picture taken, right? These kinds of experiences, what I hear from people and what we heard when we did the Board Communication Night around equity was that people felt like they couldn't speak up sometimes. We heard that. And so that, that's an inequity. That's evidence of an inequity. And how do we go about making sure we have spaces where people can express what their needs are, try to work on meeting those needs? And that doesn't mean that we don't put on an equity lens all the time, trying to be better about recognizing every time we need to do it ahead of time. But how do we deal with it if we find it and we didn't think about it? And knowing that we're not going to catch everything. So our response when it shows up and we say, that, we didn't do that one as well as we could've? How do we reflect on that? How does that change our practice? How does that add to our lens so that the next time that doesn't happen? And how do we redress the issue that took place? So I guess that's how I'd respond to that.
So do you think this letter should have said something about if you don't have internet access at home? We would suggest you use the local library?
Not necessarily. So I think that it's important that we have access to technology for people who don't have it and that we make that clear. Does it have to be every time we provide a website? No. But should it be present and people know where it is and have it be visible? And spaces where like, this is a place where if you need a computer, you can come and use it? Because we know we send out a lot of information now through technology. So I wouldn't specifically say, oh, that's a problem with that letter. I would say, how are we doing as a system in reference to supporting anyone who is struggling with access to technology at any given time? I would specifically cite Westford as a space where technology can sometimes be challenging for people. So how do we make sure that we're thinking about that in lots of different spaces? You could add that to a letter. But I don't think that a letter isn't well-done because it doesn't. I think it's, I'm working to get much more systemic. Because if we try to do it at every turn, we'll struggle to ever get there, right? Does that make sense? Okay.
Other comments, questions, thoughts? So this is exciting work. And as Al said, I think we'll look forward to hearing about the progress and the challenges as you move forward. Thanks. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to hear from Tilly, who had an opportunity to attend ACLU, American Civil Liberties Union's Southern Advocacy Institute, and on the topic of social justice. She has agreed to talk to us of what she learned there. So Tilly, thank you.
All right, thank you. So yeah, so I went to this summer program this year. It was in Washington DC hosted by ACLU, American Civil Liberties Union. So if you, for anyone that doesn't know what ACLU is, they are a nonprofit group that focuses on defending civil liberties and civil rights, mostly in the legal sphere, but also they have many programs like this throughout the year in many different locations. And they just help with advocacy and teaching people how to defend civil rights and civil liberties. So this program, like I said, in DC. In my head, I think the main purpose of it was to help students be young activists and help them, help guide them towards how, how do you navigate this social justice sphere? So what we did was we, students learned from experts about defending civil rights. So we got to talk with and listen to legal experts, lawyers, community activists. So they would tell us about their work and how it connects to what we can be doing as kids. And so that was including, and we did that in classroom sessions, lectures, and debates. So we got to engage in issue advocacy, legal strategy, and political debate, debates. And so it was very discussion-based and we were very, it was very engaged. We were doing the actual work. We were actually involved in the things that they were talking about. And just this last thing, so the program ended with all of us got to go and visit our elected officials or their staff if they, the officials can come. So me and the other Vermont person, we got to go meet with Senator Sanders' staff. And we, as a ACLU program, we selected two issues to go talk to the staff about, which this year was the immigration crisis and the dangers of facial recognition they're kind of encroaching in our society. So we did that, and I think it was an amazing experience because we got to actually do something. We got to actually go speak with an elected official. Instead of just learning about how to do this stuff, we got to go actually do it. And then at the end of that, after that, we got to have a big rally on Capitol Hill about, that was focusing on the border crisis. And so we got to hear from many of the students that were at the program, hear their personal stories. And I thought that was really interesting because all these people, they're all kids just like me going to school, maybe not in Vermont. But the stories that they had were very, I, I couldn't believe that I was hearing them. They're think, they're kind of things that you see on the news and you see in the media. But when you hear it coming from an actual child, hear it coming from a student, just when I heard it coming from a student just like me, it was really eye-opening and it just made the issue so much more real. And I think that was a really important part of the whole program for me. So let's talk about what the program was. So there were about 900 kids admitted to the program and came from all over the country, mostly California. There was about 250 kids out of 900, so a lot. Only two from Vermont, but still, it's good. And it had a very diverse population. So I, this is just an estimate, but I thought that, I think around 60% of the people there were of people of color. And the people there represented many marginalized groups, which I was very happy to see. And then also connecting to that, it says 70% admitted with financial aid. So in my group of about five close friends, all of us had some sort of aid and... all of us had some sort of aid and three of us had full aid. So I just, I think it made the whole program seem more genuine because it seemed like they actually cared about helping us, like, young activists. Like, they actually wanted us there. And the number, 900 students, they weren't trying to be selective. Like, they actually wanted us to come and learn from what they had to say. Okay, so now what we did, so we would have some, there were about 10 like main speakers who spoke in seminar format. So you can see that picture, all 900 of us were in this huge room and we had these speakers come and talk to us about issues. So one example is we had Jeff Robinson, who is a ACLU legal expert focusing on African-American history and history of racism in our country. And so he had a four-hour-long seminar about history of racism in the United States. And it was actually very eye-opening. And as a person, I think that I was pretty educated about racism. I thought I had a good idea about it. But after that, those four hours, I was just blown away. I was like, there is so much that I just learned that I had no idea existed. And it's never talked about, like, I would have thought that it's talked about when we learn about the Civil War or when we learn about the Civil Rights Movement. But it's, I've never heard it in any, never heard it in the news. I've never heard it at school. It's just never talked about. It just gets buried. And it was so astounding to see that there's all this stuff that I've never heard about, but it's so significant. So, and then in addition to those big seminars, we had like 20 smaller breakout sessions. So there are 20 options and then we all got to go to six of them. So if I go to this one, these are all the seminars and the red ones were the ones that I attended. So these ones are just more, a lot smaller groups. So it's about 15 to 30 people depending on popularity. And it's more discussion-based and we got to talk about, you know, the main issue of each of these seminars. And for example, the religious freedom as an excuse to discriminate against LGBTQ people. I went into this, I was like, I don't know what this is going to be like. But I absolutely loved it because I think it just, um, you know, I, in my head beforehand, I was like, yes, discrimination against LGBTQ people is bad. But then I went and then I've heard about this argument about using religion. I'm like, I don't really know how to navigate this argument. But after going to this 45-minute session, I just got so much information. They let, laid out all these scenarios, all these cases. And they're saying, if it's this, then it's discrimination. If it's this, maybe not. And they, now I feel so sure about how to navigate this conversation if it ever came up and just how to decide for myself whether it's discrimination and how to decide to what degree the discrimination is. And I found it very helpful to just have that information laid out for me where, instead of me just having to kind of come up with it on my own. And so you can see the other ones, those are also really interesting. They had people, like the solitary confinement one, someone who'd actually been in solitary confinement came and talked to us and their experiences are monumental. And I think the key thing from all of these seminars is having that like personal side to it. The, all these legal experts, they've worked with people that have gone through these problems. They have, they've had cases that have dealt with like actual human lives being affected by this. And I think that having that personal side to it really made the conversation more deep and actually informational. For my takeaways, so like I said, I think that the program's main focus is education and action planning. I think that this program really taught me so much about whether it was about history, like of history of racism, but it also taught me about how to, how to be an activist, how I go about things like social justice, how to navigate those things. And the action planning also, they didn't just give us information. They told us what to do with it, which I think is really important. Like, we have all this data, there are all these injustices and there's all this stuff we know, but how do we actually translate that into action? I think they did a great job with that. I think that that's a really important part when you're looking at equity and social justice. And so also in addition to that, they actually allowed us to get involved. So they gave us the information, told us what to do and then actually allowed us to do it. So that was going to meet with our senators, going to meet with our staff. That was, no adults there, it was just us, the students, talking to them. And I felt really prepared. They told us exactly how to prepare for this meeting. And now I feel like if I had to do it again, I would know exactly what to do. If I had to meet with the leader in our community, I would know exactly how to take it on and what to have, if I'm being prepared. And then, and so in general, I think it gave students phenomenal skills in regards to advocacy and activism. So like I was saying, they just laid everything out for us. So they're saying, if this is what you want to do, here's how you do it. Here is the first step you take if you're trying to, you know, get to your legislator, legislature. If you want to reach them, here's all the steps, steps you can take. Because I think often as kids, we're told, you know, you can speak to your elected officials, you can speak to the leaders in your community. But it's hard for us to know exactly how to do that. And I think that this program really did a great job at showing us, this is exactly how you do it. These are the exact steps. And here's how you can kind of get attention if you're struggling with that. Which I, I mean, I consider myself an activist and before that I had those problems too. But now I feel like if I had to take on this right now, I would feel much more prepared. And lastly, I think it really opened my eyes to the reality of our world. I think that living in Vermont, we kind of live in a bubble just in regards to a lot of social justice issues. And I, I mean, that, that's fine, but I think we just need to acknowledge it and acknowledge it when we're thinking about all these social justice and equity issues. And I think that it's important, what I learned is I went there, there's 900 kids and they all had such strong and personal stories that I would never have, I haven't heard anyone have a story like that here. And I think, like, these are kids that I could be working with one day. These are kids that will, that could be in my community when I grow up. And so I think that it was important for me to see those people and hear from them because all these kids at, in this school district, I think that it's important that they, that they have the option to hear from or see these stories, see what the world outside Vermont looks like. Because eventually they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to go into that world and work with those people too. So I think it's not only about building a good community in Vermont. I think it's about giving the kids the skills to want, have a good community in Vermont, but then even when they grow up, take that community with them, take those skills with them. And wherever they go, use it to build a better community. So if we're connecting it back, you know, more local, I think that the first thing we should do is have, like, educating students on these opportunities or programs. I, I got this, I heard about this opportunity through a special connection. So most kids at the high school or wherever would not have heard about this unless they had a special connection like I did. And so I think it's important that the educators or guidance counselors, they have more, they have a list of these opportunities. And now this can be added to the list, but they should have a list. And like, I'm in STEM Academy and every week we get a email with, here are some opportunities for you guys. You can apply to this STEM-related internship or program for the summer. And I think that it would be amazing if we could have something like that for social advocacy things. Because I think that there are so many kids at school who are passionate about issues and want to talk to someone about these issues and make a change, but they just don't know how to go about it. And I, and I think that's a legitimate problem. It's not just that they're lazy. I think it is a hard thing to navigate. So I think just helping students like know where those opportunities are and not just saying, go out and find it yourself, would be an important step for us. And then providing students with avenues to participate in issue advocacy. So that's just, so on, on our school district, like what can we, what are some of the things we can do? So start groups or initiatives in schools for change. So that can be, you have an organization or a group. And it can be in a school where you, you can, that one can be like, your advisor is the one that has, that gives you the programs and tells you where to go. Or it's just kind of like this whole ACLU program, but on a much smaller scale, like more district-wide. So here, there, there's an advisor that says, here, if you want to do, if, if a student wants to do this, here's what you can do. Here's some information, like, let me help you with this and get you on your, on track to go make change, however you want to say it. And then I think you also, we also need to start groups that allow students to feel a part of the community. One important thing that I learned at ACLU is that a lot of these kids feel like they're not accepted where they're from and feel like they can't really be who they are and talk about what they're, what is happening to them. And I, I know that we have an LGBTQ club at the high school. But this, there could be LGBTQ kids in lower-level schools that also need to talk about these, also need to have those conversations. And when I was in middle school, we didn't have a big group. I know it existed, but it wasn't out there. People didn't know about it. Or, so I think that just having those groups, even at elementary schools where kids can go if they feel uncomfortable, if they feel like they're experiencing some sort of problems that they just don't know how to talk about or who to talk about. So some, some safe space that they can talk about their issues other than a guidance council, where it's like, you're kind of in a community of talking about it. And then help students get involved with leaders. That kind of connects back to the organization thing. Just have some space where students know, are able to get information about how to start, make, like, how to make action, how, how I got that information about these are the steps you want to do. I think that that should be available to students. If you want to meet with this elected official, here's how you do it. This, a straight list of steps on how you do that. And I think, like I said, so many kids want to do it and they care about it, but it's just so hard for us to just be like, here, go figure it out. I think if there's some more structure, it would be, you'd be able to get so much more done. And then this kind of sums it all up. But I think we need to work with the community on diversity and inclusion initiatives. I mean, I think, I, I know that in the last couple of years, there's been an international potluck at EMS. I think that's an amazing way to kind of, you know, mesh cultures and just have a gathering where everyone is welcome and you're just building a community of diversity. And you're not trying to nullify everyone's every culture. You're just trying to bring them together and acknowledge everyone's differences. And I think more events like that where people aren't trying to be the same, but just understand everyone, that everyone's different and everyone comes with their own set of issues, depending on who they are. I think to come together and acknowledge that and have a safe space to just create a community where that's okay and we're going to work on that is really important. So basically, just things like that to make a safe and accepting community is really important. And that's all I have for today. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tilly, that was very impressive. I know that I couldn't have given that kind of presentation when I was in high school. So thank you. And I do hope that you'll work with others to find ways to make these kinds of opportunities make students know that they're available. That's great. So thanks. Okay. So now I'll move on to the board's self-assessment review. So I took some time this afternoon to go through and, but I, I didn't have all the responses until today. So I couldn't work on it till today. But I went through and divided up the various items in the way that you will see. So there were a lot of statements in that self-evaluation with her, 70% or more of the board members either agreed or strongly agreed with the statement. And frankly, as a board chair, that was very encouraging to see. I don't think we need to spend time there. I shared this document with all of you late this afternoon. So I think it makes more sense to spend our time where there is more disagreement. And I should preface this by saying, this is really, we did this right now to help get us ready for the retreat on Friday. So it, it's just a way to stimulate some thinking as we go into talking about our goals for next year. So in this middle group, we were mostly split 50/50. So half of us think this is happening and half of us think it's not. So I, I don't know if you want to take time to talk about and hit these individual areas. There's one area I want to talk about here. Maybe Brian, we can try to get just this section there. Okay, so I think there are five or six statement, five statements that were in that 50/50 range. The one I wanted to talk about is board members have the information needed to make informed decisions and understand their potential impact. It surprised me that half of us did not think that was true. And I wondered if there were board members who would be willing to share what they think is missing. Keely?
I actually wanted to ask for a piece of information to accompany this for when we discuss more about the retreat, which is what the category header was on the top of the page for different ranges of numbers? Because like, there's a process for soliciting and responding to input from staff and community. I think I made my decision on that one based on, I don't remember if it was about policy or if it was about student performance or what it was about. I was like, well, soliciting and responding to input about this category. And I think probably the same thing would apply for a lot of these, that whatever the category header at the top influenced how I answered the question. So I don't actually remember how I answered most questions in isolation.
Oh, okay, that's fair. But I think this statement that board members have the information they need to make informed decisions is a pretty straightforward statement. So I'm just curious what board members who disagreed with that statement think they need that they're not getting. Brendan?
I honestly forget how I answered this question. But I, but I think that one of the, one of the thoughts that I did have as I contemplated it is that it wasn't a universal. So for example, there was one or two instances where I felt like I didn't have the information I needed versus every single instance of, you know, or every issue, I felt like I didn't have the information. So it was hard to sort of answer a question when it didn't fit neatly into agree or disagree. It was like, well, sometimes.
Yeah.
So I guess that was, that was another thing I'd like to say about the, about the survey itself. There should be either a free text box or a neutral option. Because a lot of the questions, I didn't actually feel strongly one way or the other, which I think is, which is a sign in and of itself. But I felt like neutral or no opinion was, was sort of a missing option.
So I think some people who felt they couldn't answer one way or the other, picked the N A option. But it isn't clear that that's what you should do in that case. Keely?
One example that, I don't remember how I answered this either. One example that I think we did not have enough information is the whole adding SEL to the budget conversation. So to me, that was such a big issue that it could have pushed me to answer this. I disagree because that was something where I really needed more info earlier. And I hope that doesn't happen again, kind of situation.
Right.
Okay.
Especially with the magnitude of the money involved. Uh, when you're talking millions of dollars here, uh, well, the total, for the total. It was a lot of money, the 600, 637,000. It's still a sizable amount.
Kim, I think that that was an example that is resonating with me. And I also can't remember how I actually answered that. And definitely felt as I was going through it that we would want to look at format for a text box to be able to inform exactly this, where we're wondering where people are coming at from their answers on certain things.
Yeah.
Especially where it's kind of disparate. And I think in fairness, there's been occasions probably where we've not been clear about what we're looking for. And, and we've identified that over the year as a challenge that administration may feel as though they're, you know, throwing darts or spaghetti and that's, we can, we can.
I got it a little differently, but that particular one time-
I got it a little differently, but that particular one timing wise on it, the, um, the sense that that was a growing need, but we didn't hear about it till the end, didn't put us in a position to feel as though we were fully informed at a time where we could make a decision that felt, um, felt right for the budget process, frankly.
So if you had a box and then be able to say, agree, except for this specific example that, that
Or even just to be able to say, I don't agree and here's why, here's one example of that or, you know, that one was big enough that that tipped me that way. And frankly, again, I'm not positive that I remember how I'd answered that, but that is the one that sticks out for me as I was thinking about that one.
Okay. Patrick and then you.
Um, I actually want to touch on something that I think Brian O'Regan mentioned with us is that I don't feel that I'm not provided with materials, you know, when it comes to making decisions. But sometimes, I think a majority of the board just has more practical experience than I do. So when we start talking about things that some people just take as an assumption that we would know, like for example, high school has A day and B day. I don't know what A day and B day means because I don't have a kid in high school and I haven't had one yet. Or Kelly mentioned that she was in STEM Academy. Like, I can get an idea of what STEM Academy probably is, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, you know, does that mean that students are following a very strict track? Does that mean that there's a series of classes that they can take that, you know, uh, aren't available to other students in it? Like, I, it's just, there's like a baseline knowledge gap sometimes that I do, you know, when I think it's really relevant or specific, I'll, I'll make mention of it. But, you know, if I was stopping us every two seconds when it came to talking about the high school, just because it's, I just think it's a lack of familiarity with me being here or having a kid in the high school or, you know, having, you know, been on the board for such an extended period of time that, you know, they were looking at high school before that. It's, it's not a materials prep thing, it's a baseline knowledge thing that I just, you know, probably won't have for another five or six years unless someone wants to give you a crash course.
It's a good reminder, Patrick. It's kind of like jargon alerts maybe the administration needs to just keep in mind that sometimes we need to know those baseline things or be directed to resources where we can read about them. Diane?
Okay, um, I don't remember how I answered any of these questions, but I do recall that frequently I would say that we were in progress and I couldn't say that we were in progress. Okay, a lot of the questions assumed you either did it or you didn't. And it's like, it's sort of like, no, we're in progress. If I had that to say, yes, we're in progress, we're on the road. But it's like, in some cases, I couldn't tell you that, okay? It did not give me a section to do that. And to, to echo Patrick, some of us don't have children there anymore and things have changed a little bit since I was there. Um, and, um, you know, it's, but there's still some basics that are the same no matter what grade you're at, you know? But, you know, if I didn't go to the presentations, I wouldn't know what STEM was.
And do keep the good work.
So, um, you know, but it, it's a body of knowledge that yes, that please don't make assumptions. Some of us don't have that background anymore. Things have changed in twenty years.
Well, I think that one is, is needing the information to make a decision. We haven't had a decision around the different academies to inform. Do, you know, I mean, you're taking, talking about basic knowledge.
Yeah, right, basic knowledge that may apply to a subject that we're talking about. I don't need to know about STEM academies probably until it comes up. But, you know, if at the point it does come up, if I have no background information on it, then that's a little bit more difficult.
Yep.
That's a, that's a good point.
I think we can constantly teach the board about things that are happening that fill our board meetings.
Right, exactly. Kim?
I think though, thinking about that in the context of sort of a step back and how are we trying to meet the needs of all students every day, every way? Um, if, if we are looking at those as potentially paths towards personalizing learning for students. So, thinking about either building specific things or jargony things that we might not know if we don't have a student in the buildings, um, through the lens of right now, it'd just be our vision. But if we get to outcome statements or what we're seeking to achieve for our students through that broader lens, it can bring in those examples in a way that's appropriate for the board to understand. So when we get to a space of budget time and resourcing these resources um, for students to meet needs that are serving our vision, we've got a connection to it. Yep.
Is there anything else in that section that you would like to specifically talk about?
Sure, I'm pretty sure I said disagree or strongly disagree, to be honest. And, you know, I haven't been on the board that long. But I think the most information we got, which actually wasn't even a board decision, was with the loop service for the villages, sort of the various options. That gave the most full picture, I think, of a decision that actually wasn't a decision that we've had.
First.
Well, I mean, right, I mean, it wasn't our decision. Um, so going, I kind of answered that as, you know, going forward, I like to see more of that sort of three sixty, here's what we're recommending, here's why, if you don't choose to do this, here's what we think will happen. You know, I kind of, I would like to have the whole picture and not just, this is our recommendation and why, without any discussion of if you decide not to, here are the repercussions.
Okay, great. So, any of those other five statements that you'd like to talk about tonight? That one just jumped out at me. Okay, if we move forward, there were three statements where more than fifty percent of the board members either disagreed or disagreed strongly. So, um, I would hope that we will discuss these three at the retreat. Um, and I, it seems to me like they're all areas that we would be likely to talk about. Um, anything anyone wants to say specifically about those three? Okay. Yeah, sorry, Patrick.
No, no. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'd like us to really talk about eighteen, um, engaging the community and setting budget priorities. I think it's one that we struggle with a lot, even when we make outreach attempts to the community, we have trouble getting feedback, which I think has been our biggest stumbling block in doing this, is that, you know, we try to, you know, create these programs or workshops and we end up with seventeen people at them. So, I mean, I think maybe we need to kind of, I don't know if it's a matter of resetting the table, but figuring out some way to engage the community effectively that we're just missing right now. And I don't, I'm not sure what that looks like, but I, I feel like this part is, is really important and we can really, in a way, kind of afford to coast by because our community supports us very, very strongly with the budget votes. So it's maybe not as much of an issue as it might be in other districts, but I, I think it's an important one for us to get into the practice of for years down the road.
Yeah, and I, it's one that I've given some thought to, but not come up with a good answer to. You know, one way to approach it is a values discussion because a budget is a values document. Um, and that might be something we could do with the community and then use those values as we're making decisions. But I, I don't know. It's frankly my, my too lengthy experience. You only get the community to participate when they're upset. And I, you know, I think it's really challenging to get them to participate otherwise. But it's a, it's an area that we clearly, I think, need a conversation about. Kelly?
To speak to that, I have literally zero interest in budget priorities. None whatsoever. It's like, I could care less. There are experts who can figure out what stuff costs. I'm very interested in the priorities of this district in terms of learning, staffing, sustainable operations, all sorts of things that end up having an effect on the budget. And if we could start articulating those things instead of budget priorities, you might get more people interested.
I was going to say that the, the budget priority, you know, we took this survey years and years ago from a tool and we adopted it and.
This is, yeah, this is the V S P A tool.
But it's the priorities, I mean, setting budget parameters, you know, the board does like our class size parameters and the negotiated contract that the board, just those two things establish above fifty million dollars of our budget. Just those two actions by the board, policy, negotiations. So then after that fifty million, we start to get down to like, okay, where are we gonna? Because bu- budget priorities often end up, where are we going to put new money? And I think we do have to have more of a values, more of an outcome, more of an ends conversation. And I think that that's much more engaging than having people come in and looking at spreadsheets. And I, I think it's more accessible. What do we want our schools to be doing? What's the achievement we want to be realizing? And what do we want this community to be valuing and benefiting from?
I would agree and I think to that end, I look at maybe the number one being more important to a community conversation than, um, I can't help but think about that, the community setting budget priorities. To Kelly's point, we have experts that do that. We take in that information, ideally with enough information to be able to say that, yes, these investments align with achieving our vision for students because that's been articulated with community input. But, um, I'd be cautious of us taking the twenty people who show up in an audience and their directive on what our increased should or should not be or what line item should be increased or decreased, as happens at the annual meeting for the municipality, as being the directive that we would want our school and students to be working through. Um, so I would find that number one as much more important to a conversation, even things that do go to what you were talking about, Brian, like, like what do we anticipate for retirements in the next three to five years, for enrollment in the next three to five years? Where can we envision, um, any changes that are going to impact those pieces? Because we're looking out facilities, you know, I, those are, that longer range planning to me is one that I think people would be more interested in.
Um, okay, okay, we'll do you, Diane, and then I'll remind you that we will
I'll make it quick.
continue this discussion on Friday.
Yes, um, for number one, Beth and Brian are the only ones who've really discussed multi-year anything. The board in our discussions have not discussed multi-year anything. We have not discussed planning, where do we want to go from here to there? The closest we've done anything in multi-year has been equity. How are we going to achieve it? So, and even then, we don't have, well, our, our honored guest here is, is, has told us how, how we're going to attempt to get there, but we don't have, where do, where do we want to go with this? We've got how we want to do it and what trainings do we need to get there so that we can recognize that we can get there? But we haven't said, that's where I want to go. Okay, so, we need to discuss this new district, which has been operating. Where, where, we know what we started with, we're certainly beyond that, but where are we really going? And we haven't, we have not talked about this.
So I think there's trouble for me that I want to talk about on Friday. This is a question that I submitted for our panel is how, how does our board plan, if there is one, interact with the school district's continuous improvement plan? Should there be two different documents or is that the document? Um, so I, you know, I, not to be answered tonight, but something to think about prior to Friday. Because that's what I think about as the document that is our direction, but maybe there needs to be more. Okay, so it was very hard to do these last three pieces because there were multiple comments, but I did my best to find some commonality. Um, so under the three strengths, the things that were, um, mentioned the most were that the board's respectful, that it's committed to engagement and people appreciate the diversity of perspectives. Three areas in need of improvement, really the only common theme that I saw in the answers there what is a desire to, um, figure out what we want for student outcomes and how we're going to assist them to measure whether we're achieving those outcomes. And then under the three most challenging moments, two things came up as common answers. And it was of course transportation, no surprise there, and the only budget request. So, I, we did all this in this meeting to stimulate your thinking for Friday, for the retreat. The other thing I sent you this afternoon, what is the, the, I can't even remember what we called them, but kind of the themes that came out of our retreat with Brian O'Regan. So, I think those are good things to look back on and reflect about before Friday's. Any final thoughts or comments?
I think it's important we talk about, that the board come to some consensus about the student outcomes, the measurement tools, the benchmarks for each grouping of students and subgroups. And to have some sort of commonality of reporting here and timeframes. Because up until this point, I'm frankly not satisfied. I'm not. And I'm not sure what, how we proceed from here, but I know that I, I have a very hard time with the lack of data. And I think this needs to be a data-driven board. And I think we need more specifics so we have a better understanding of the issues and the resources that are needed and we can articulate those things to our community. Right now, I feel I can't. My hands are tied. I've had a few conversations with A O E about the data and I know that I can get every piece of data that I would like to see. And I know, uh, that it might be messy getting it, but it can be gotten. And, uh, so if I don't get it here, I will get it for the, for myself and for my community. So, uh, I hope we can make progress in this area. Thank you.
I think, um, we got a lot of data at the end of June and I think that, um, not, not to, um, to challenge your perception, Al, at all, just to say, for me, that data comes in isolated buckets.
Pieces.
Without a sense of without a sense of the so what, I guess. The, what is it telling us about progress towards our vision? So it's more that, um, those are discrete pieces of data that are, are part of our goals or part of, um, data we can mine and provide to us. But how are they helping us see? And again, I think part of this is because we've not articulated the outcomes we're seeking for students. So they are these isolated little buckets. What does that mean if all of that isolated data? How is that telling us how we are moving students towards achieving our vision? And when we ideally, in my mind, get to a place of being able to articulate the outcomes we're looking for, for students, like interdisciplinary learning and, and 21st century skills and whatever those other things that are about what we want students to know and be able to do when they're done here. Um, I would want to see the data brought to us in a way that makes that case.
Yep.
So those discrete data pieces are telling us what about our progress in that regard. So, so I think it's a process that I, I wouldn't look back and say, we didn't eventually get data last year. We did eventually get it and some, and we got more concentrated data on some of the younger years earlier on and as that became available. But aspect data reporting alone doesn't do it, you know? Making the story for the, for our movement of students towards the vision is, I think, what I'd like to see the data tell us and make the silhouette. But we haven't articulated what we expect students to be able to do. So I hope that that part of the process is gonna bring us more fulfilling data reporting, if you will.
And when you say we, you mean the board hasn't?
We haven't articulated.
So that's the difference between CIP and then the board.
Right, and so I think that that's why I, I definitely can see, Martha, where we shouldn't be in conflict with the CIP. But, um, I think that we, ours might be a step back from it. And what would that look like if it were happening? What would that mean for students? And we should be able to articulate that based on the values our community tells us is important about what students know and be able to do when they leave. And I don't know that that's dramatically different in Essex than it would be in, you know, other communities and maybe not different at all in other Chittenden County communities, for instance. But I just don't think that we've framed what we need in that way so that it, the data ends up feeling unfulfilling for me.
Yep.
And I think frankly, the conversation got sidetracked because I thought we were headed down that road. And then when Sean Bigmanus said, "Don't do that outcome piece unless you adopt policy governance," I think that was, it was just hard. I think that set a roadblock.
Yeah, just a question to address, you know, Al and Kim. I, I agree with Al and Kim. Does the board have a budget if we wanted, if the board wanted to hire a consultant to help the board come up with what we see as, you know, what we should be tracking and why and how? Separate from the administration, do we have a budget to do something like that? Okay.
Doesn't that make me regret to sort of change consultants to work with us in articulating our outreach to the community?
Yeah, I see that we might need
Yeah, it's a different type.
some expertise outside of the administration to help us form what it is we should be looking for and how to get it and how to measure it going forward.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. I look forward to further discussion on Friday. All right, next is the superintendent monitoring report, um, monitoring.
There's a handout. I did put it in your folder. So this is around the voluntary school reassignment policy. And I wanted to bring you new numbers. It is being utilized a lot. In, from my point of view, it is, since it's been a merged district. So I went through, you know, the, the beginning of the policy and then my interpretation of that policy, which is really for the three communities to be able to, um, apply for the voluntary school reassignment so that if a person moves, they can stay in the same school. Or if they, for some reason, want to choose another school in the district from the one that they live in. And that it really has to do around class size. If the district at any point could put out to, we almost did this this year, put out to K students in Westford if you would like to go to one of the other schools because we were getting this really large class size. And then it stopped, so we didn't need that. But we thought we were going to have a bubble that we would have had to use that. So that's the purpose. My interpretation, um, of this policy is that purpose. So in the evidence of that, um, families are notified in the district of this transfer policy in March 2019. They also tend to call a lot to see if they're, and when they're moving. We have a lot of people that will call and say, "We're thinking about moving to the town and we live in the village. Can we do that and can our children stay in the village?" And so then I just get more detail from that and it's been, it's been great. But we put out that official notice and then the applications really, they're supposed to apply by April fifteenth, which they're really ongoing because somebody might not know on April fifteenth that they're moving in July. And so those that did apply, then the decisions were made by May first and they were sent their letters. And mainly phone calls, I end up talking to a lot of families. Mostly it's due to families moving, um, and that we continue to collect those throughout the year. But a, um, a large dosage came in from July one to the August, to the beginning of school year this year. Lorna has been great about, um, keeping track of that. Each request is, is on a school transfer log. The data's then entered into Power School. So if a child goes from Hiawatha to Fleming and they have a town address in Power School, we know the reason why. And so that principals don't call or admin assistants, like, wait a minute, they're not supposed to be here. So that's tracked. Once they apply, they can stay, we, they stay according to our policy in the system. They don't have to continue to reapply, which is always, um, people are happy about that. With each request, I confer with the principals and it's usually a couple of principals, um, that I'm dealing with. The one that maybe they're leaving and the one they're heading to and that reason. Then I brought some data, um, the numbers. The numbers of students there in 2018, 2019, there were forty-three requests approved and then thir- that's thirty-seven families out of those requests. And then the numbers over there for the reason of transfer. Mostly, um, due to a move, moving. Twenty-four moved to the town and requested to remain in the village. We have people moving outside of the junction part to look for, um, affordable housing. So that's where a lot of them, or they just go like right over the border. And, um, which happens a lot. Everybody says, "I'm just over the border now." Um, and then sixteen moved to the village and requested to main, but remain in the town schools. One moved to the town and remained in Westford. And then, uh, two requested village schools due to other reasons. This is where Erin talked to you about the inequities because we do not, our policy, we don't cross over in transportation. So if a person, if a student wanted to stay in village schools and they live in the town, we, there's not a bus to bring them from the town to the village. So that does cause some inequities and who can actually apply for this. So I do always have those conversations with families and ask if that's going to be a struggle or, um, and we have worked out a few with the middle school riding the public transit, which is great. And then this year so far, since, um, it's really of April, but they began in August. Uh, fourteen students, it's a number of, uh, twelve families. Twelve moved from the town and requested to remain in the village and one moved from the village and requested to ma- um, maintain in the town schools. And one moved to the town and requested to remain at Westford. So that is, um, I think it's a great, it's a large number of families that are accessing it. And when they're allowed to access it, I've only had to deny two due to size, um, in the class. We had a large size going, uh, sixth graders going to ADL and we're worried about numbers, so we did have to deny a few, but, yeah.
Um, as a minor corrective to the transportation inequity issue, when we wrote this policy, um, we didn't have the same practices with regard to congregated stops. So the assumption was that you would suddenly be putting like an individual stop for town buses in the village. Could we consider making it possible if they could get to a congregated stop pretty appropriate municipality, that they could ride transportation?
Right, and we have done that also for a student who lived close to the border. And the parent was able to bring them to a point in the, to be picked up to bring to the town school. So that has happened, but it's not stated in our policy and we probably should relook at that.
But we could consider that since the transportation approach has changed.
Yeah.
Questions, comments? Okay.
This is a, this is a practice, I think Essex Town School Board members remember and CCSU Board members. This is, you know, this would have resulted in nearly six hundred thousand dollars of tuition payments by our citizens. It was legally unable to be done before when they were all separate LEAs. So, you know, I think this is, for me, this is one of those things that you point to is like, is there some evidence that merger makes things different? I think it's.
Ugly.
It is definitely part of promise of merger. Time?
Sure. This just makes me think, like something I've been thinking for a while. Now that we've merged, how do we figure out how to operate efficiently as a merged district? And this leads me to the question of, should we be looking at the boundaries for the current schools and the busing and possibly change things up? I know that's probably potential a lot of disruption, but I think it's something we should at least look at because it might make sense to move things around a little bit.
We have had those discussions.
Yeah.
We just had a case too that some said it was in the town and some said it was in the village. And it would have made much more sense if it really was in the village because we actually had a bus, but it was in the town from previous history. So those are things we need to look at.
I think facilities will open up some of those conversations. But school redistricting is, you know, that's a, that's a straight line to some people's hearts, you know? But it's a good one to start long.
Yeah.
You know, if you started to signal that this is gonna change in the next five years, you pretty much clear out an entire school population, so.
Yes, yes, leadership is not always easy.
Yeah.
Tilly.
Nor is change.
They're the same thing a lot of times.
I, I thought it was really interesting reading the, um, documentation with one of our recent hires, um, or maybe one of my kid's teachers or something. Someone who is currently a teacher in our district had attended Hiawatha for grades K through five. So it's not unknown to change things about what grades and what neighborhoods go to school. And maybe having a little bit of historical research to inform us about all the ways that schools have changed in the past would help bring out the voices of those who remember the previous changes and could help us be less afraid about future ones.
Fifth grade was an A D M.
This is the third high school built in Essex Junction.
Yeah. Or more.
Yes.
Yeah, I forgot, Westford, one time, I had twelve schools or something. Yeah.
One on each street.
That's when they were in Cisco and every neighborhood. Brendan? Anything else? Okay, um, task team updates, anything on communications and engagement?
Liz did have one thing she wanted to mention that she sent me via text a few minutes ago. She wanted to talk about the meeting evaluations and how we can make them more meaningful. Something to think about. I think she wants to talk a little bit more about it, um, with some time at the retreat. But just something that.
Be thinking about.
They aren't always sent out and when they are sent out, we don't always get a lot of response necessarily, so.
Yeah, and one thing to think about, one thing I struggle with when I read them is how much attention do I pay to something that one person said? You know? I mean, clearly, if several people are saying, "This didn't go well," then that's something I absolutely need to pay attention to. But if it's something that just one person says, I'm not always sure how to, how to deal with that. So that's something we can talk about as well. Okay, local and statewide updates. Patrick, do you have anything from those?
Nothing locally.
No? Kim? I can't think of any statewide update. This is my, Brendan?
I just wanted to jump back to task team updates. So with the retreat coming up on Friday, I would just put one more plug in and I sent you an email about this to add your questions to our document for the, for the good, good governance panel. If you have other questions that you're curious about, sort of now's the time to, uh, plug those into that document. So you should have, although I'm not sure about our student members, uh, you should have an email in your inbox with a link to the document. So if you could, by Friday evening, make sure that you have a chance to look at what's there and add any other questions that come to mind for you.
Friday, Thursday evening?
Thursday evening.
So I really wanted to say.
Sorry, Thursday evening.
I wanted to send that document to them so they're thinking about it ahead of time. So I was thinking tomorrow. Like Wednesday at noon would be awesome.
Right, so if you haven't, if you haven't done it and you have things that you want to make sure are discussed, please try to get them in there by noon tomorrow. Thanks for that reminder. Okay, value appreciation or challenge? Who wants to start? Al, I'll start with you.
Okay, well, I really appreciated Erin's presentation tonight. Was, uh, pretty much on target, made a few suggestions, but I, I think you're doing a great job, so keep up the work.
Kim?
I appreciated the equity focus and Erin and Tilly. It was just from both of you, amazing energy and passion and wisdom from both of you and I am so grateful.
Okay.
I don't know, I gotta use any of those three words. I gotta thank both Erin and, and Tilly for their presentation. It was informative. Thank you very well.
Tilly?
I really appreciated Erin's equity presentation. It's very inform- informational. I really appreciated Tilly's, um, presentation. I thought that was really interesting and I appreciated her saying about like, uh, making these opportunities more known to students. Um, I also really appreciated Erin's presentation. I thought it was interesting how like, we talk a lot about how beneficial SCL learning can be. And it, it definitely is. I mean, I, I believe in it a lot. But it's, it's interesting to see how things are like good and bad in moderation. And I liked hearing, um, both sides of that.
Great. Patrick? I don't know, I went to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I wasn't ready.
Get ready.
I value the board's willingness to learn and want to know more about equity and go through that as we do as, um, leaders and teachers and students as we go through it, that you're willing to do that with us.
Yeah, do you want something?
Sure, I appreciated being able to present on something and have a student present too and the future opportunities that that creates and all of the suggestions from that amazing opportunity you had. And definitely don't want this to be the last conversation about that, so, thanks.
I really appreciate the difference a year can make. And it, I mean, it, it's just clearly by the agenda and what the, you know, you, you make, you spend time on things that are a priority. To spend time on a student presentation and equity presentation is, is nice compared to the logistics of our busing fleet. It's nice to focus inside the bells.
Thanks. Patrick?
Now I came up with two, and I can't decide which one. I'm going to say appreciation for our community and what I've heard about the busing and starting it up in the village. It has been a shocking turnaround. I mean, you know, always expect a little bit of like first day hiccups or whatever, but, I mean, I, people that I've talked to, the people that I've, you know, communicated with or touched base with, like, there was just so much appreciation that the transportation is in place, that there are families in the junction who have been effusive in their praise because they don't have to worry about finding a babysitter for an hour every day after school, where like legitimately helping people, you know, survive because we were able to get busing, you know, places where we weren't before. So I, I really very much value the feedback that we've gotten from the community.
Yeah, I appreciate being on a board where we're having really meaningful discussions about equity, diversity, and inclusion, and I incredibly, I value so much, and tonight is another sort of, oh, right, that's another, the fact that we have student representatives on this board is something that I value very much, and I thought your presentation was excellent.
This didn't come up during the meeting, but I appreciate that the board notes included a procedure for our information about surveillance video. While we're talking about the ACLU, this seems like an important thing to communicate clearly with our community about. I only found one typo, and I'll share with you what it was, so.
It was put there intentionally?
Sure, I appreciated Tilly's presentation and the fact that she was able to do that. That's pretty amazing, and how you related it back to the school and what you can do. Having been a lobbyist at a previous point in my life and an advocate, going to DC and going to this, to the Capitol is infectious. So I hope that stays with you and you stay with it because it's just, it's an amazing experience. I think more people should be able to do that.
I would just say that I appreciate being able to chair a meeting of such engaged board members who are talking about and asking about the important things. Thank you all. Okay, our next, well, our next regular board meeting is on September 17. We will be meeting on Friday at 8:30 at the police station for our retreat. You two have your agenda for the retreat. Does anybody have anything from the agenda for Sept- September 17 that they want to be sure we put on the agenda?
I mean, I need to see what's gonna happen at the retreat.
Right, okay.
Maybe we can ask that question at the end of the retreat?
Yeah, that, right. I'm not sure there would be enough time to get something on that agenda. Brian, I can't really see that. Could you remind us what's on our calendar map for the 17th?
Yeah, we would be coming out of the retreat with the expectation that there would be, we'd be moving towards an annual work plan and goals for the board, so that would probably be, and then we are scheduled to have a superintendent's report and scheduled to have a Q4 financial report. Those are unaudited numbers from FY19. So that would be on our sort of regular schedule, and then we can discuss, I, I think there would be imaginable you'd have a, something that would flow over from the retreat into the board meeting.
Right.
Especially around some kind of governance decision or work timeline.
Keely?
I don't, we're not having a communications meeting this week because we're spending so much time as a board. But I know we, Liz had raised with you discussing possible approaches to how we respond to public to be heard and to comments and complaints from the public. With communications rather than.
Not a board discussion, no. Yes, and Beth, I don't know if you'll have your polls ready.
I should.
But then, so.
Part of my report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be excellent.
We do intend on bringing the memorandum of understanding for this school year for the SRO. We did it last year, if you recall, in February, when officer, when the officer was first placed at the high school, we'll re-up that. This is only the first position, so this is not the paid position that we had budgeted for. They're having staffing issues, and that's been delayed, and it's outside of our control.
Okay. SRO is school reassignment.
Officer mix.
For those of you who hadn't made that connection yet. Okay. Messages to the community. I think it's about the equity presentation. Maybe a little piece about the school transfer policy, you know, that might be a reminder to people that it exists. Anything else?
I think you probably meant it, Martha, but the equity presentation to include Tilly's focus as well.
Anything else? We are adjourned.
Go us.